Did anybody sign up to the thing, uh, they'll sing with you?
No, I don't have anybody to listen.
You got a public.
Oh, we have. We have one, I guess. It was for.
It's for agenda item number eight.
Do what?
Agenda item number eight.
We're gonna wait until the agenda item is number eight and we're on number six. I'm here there pretty quick here.
Thank you.
All right. Item six on the agenda, we'll talk about that.
I'm right here, I just walked in, sir. Thank you. We had our employee appreciation lunch in Canada donated $725 towards the meal and it's normal procedure whenever a company donates money that we come in and get through insurance court to accept the money, just like we did Christmas time with, uh, a company that Helen got to donate money from and from John Maxx.
We all already knew them, huh?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure, thinking of that.
Well, I may back that up. I paid for it directly out of my account, my, my personal checking account to pay for the meal because it, and Anna did not have time to get the check to us beforehand because it has to come from Colorado. And we did this at Christmas, we had $500 to come in like the day before the Christmas party and we came in after the fact to accept it.
Well, we'll give some more attention to this later on. I'm not sure that's a good way to do it. But we've done it that way, so.
Right.
I still don't think it's a good way to do it. We'll, we'll see you on that road. Thank you. And, and thank you in honor, of course, whoever's supposed to, is, should there be something from the court?
Well, I need approval to accept that money from them.
You've already accepted it. I, I don't understand why we would approve that to the fact.
That's been the normal procedure.
That doesn't mean this been the correct procedure ever.
Well, I'm gonna be accepting that donation, $725. Can you promise we can move on?
Is there any discussion and there's gonna be me talking about it? I don't think you ought to accept money if, if we don't do it before the fact. Nobody has to feel this, of course, but, uh, in the future, I will, I'll present something to the court that I think we should approve about the accepted donations and, uh, I just, I don't think it's the way to do it.
I certainly agree with the judge. I, I realize it was expedient to do it, but when you go to Cold England County Funds and Personal Funds, it can get real fuzzy real quick.
It can and, uh, we shouldn't handle it that way, but if, if any of you have, any of the court has any suggestions on how we ought to handle this sort of thing, or please talk to the other members of the court, it'd be, and you go ahead and sit down.
Thank you.
You were through, where you're not, I don't need to catch your shot. All right. With that said, let's get on with the rest of the agenda. Don't we have to vote, y'all made a motion out? Kind of a useless motion, but.
Well, nothing to this.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from the, any board member, any commissioner, court member? All right, all in favor of accepting the donation, I suppose, signify by, say, well, let's raise our right hand so everybody can see who's voting and who's not. And all opposed, same side, all voting for it. Motion carried. Okay, item seven on the agenda, is the presentation acceptance of the independent audit for the fiscal year 2014 by Mike Del Toro CPA with Alonzo, I'm scared to pronounce his next name, I might mispronounce it. Is it, uh, Michael Reese? Okay, accidentally. Urban Apollo CPA is offered by La Juana. And, uh, if y'all will go forward with the presentation.
Thank you, Judge Long. Commissioner, thank you for having me here this morning. Excuse me, my voice may crack, I'm from Southern, a little bit of sinus issue right now. We conducted the audit for the fiscal year September 30th, 2014. We have two documents in running, one is a bound document, a staple document. I'm just gonna cover very quickly the, the bound document. That is the financial report. It is, uh, our opinion, which is on page three of the report, actually, I'm sorry, page one, several pages, it was page one. As our independent auditors report, it's a clean opinion, it's actually kind of an unmodified opinion, basically states that we conducted our audit in accordance with obviously standards generally accepted in the United States. And we found that the document as presented is presented in accordance with accounting standards generally accepted in the United States. So it is a clean opinion. Our audit consisted of several features, we do a risk assessment, we look at the county's functions, primary accounting functions like payroll, cash receipts, cash receipts, and the cash receipts area, we're looking at, uh, at tax collections and other receipts that come in. Uh, we're looking at that to help us plan the audit and look for any areas of control deficiencies. We did find a number of control issues, which we'll talk about that, we didn't consider them material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, like we had last year in the bank reconciliation area. Bank recs are still a little bit of a problem, but they're not nearly as big a problem as they were last year. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into that staple document. Uh, but importantly, the bound document is the big, thick document, again, it's clean opinion, financial, uh, are presented in accordance with our standards. And if you look at the numbers in the general fund, I'm just very quickly go over the general fund numbers, obviously, that's the most of the numbers to the county. And it's actually on page six that I'll be looking at most of the data. Our unassigned fund balance, which is what we can use going forward for future budgets, is $26.4 million. Last year that was $17 million, so we had a $9.4 million increase in our general fund. An unheard accomplishment for local governments, mainly that's common down in this, this area where the oil boom is going, but that, that's pretty uncommon. Your increase in fund balance was just about as much as your average expenditures for the year in your general fund. So, uh, again, you've got a very, very healthy fund balance in your general fund. The remainder of your fund balances, $9.9 million to be exact, are restricted, committed for special purposes, things such as debt service, you have some capital project restrictions and, and obviously a number of special revenue funds that, uh, the, the funds that came in for those special revenues are legislatively committed for a particular purpose. So you had about $9.9 million in those types of fund balance. During the year, you issued a, a bond for $7.7 million, actually, about $8 million because there was a premium on that bond. It was for the jail project and for road repairs. We fully spent those funds during the fiscal year and we obviously tested those to make sure they were spent on its intended purposes and we found that they weren't. So again, it's very clean, very good of, of a financial position for the county. And it's a clean opinion. And again, we didn't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the county's operations, but we did have two comments and those are covered in that second staple document. While that, that document is required communication that we got to make, us being the defendant on sure and hear the commissioners of the county. I'm not gonna cover all those items that there's, uh, standard, there's nothing to, nothing to alarm the commissioners or the citizens, but I will cover the, the comments that we have and they're on the last page of that staple document. Bank recs, as I mentioned, they were improved from last year. If you remember last year, we were unable to issue our audit this early because we had such a significant difference, unaccounted differences in our bank recs. And we're happy to report that those have been reduced to a point where we can issue opinions. The differences are, uh, you know, we, when we do an audit, we don't get things to, to do a difference. We have to assess whether the differences are material or not based on the financial position of, of organizations. So the differences in our cash, a couple, one was off $8,000, one was off $5,000, one was off $13,000. Those are not material for audit purposes. Your financial statements are materially, within a material, um, correct statement, but, but we still do have some differences in our cash and, and so we still have a problem getting our cash recs down to a zero difference, which would be beneficial, would be nice. The concern I have, obviously, I have a lot of clients where we don't get to a zero balance. The concern I have is you've had this problem in the past and, and we passed on it because it was immaterial. The problem we have here, and why I'm bringing up is the comment, you know, and discussing it, is those differences eventually built up to a point where last year we couldn't issue a report because we had to figure out what this difference was. So that's my comment here, is that we still have a difference, we need to take care of these differences monthly. We either, we either figure out what they are or we write them off, we adjust our cash, we cancel these differences, and we track these write offs to make sure they're not building up to a big number. Because if they're building up to a big number, that means something's going on in our recs that's not right. But if we missed something one month, normally it clears out in the next, so if we write it off this month, it'll clear out the next month. And so typically you don't see an increase in your differences in the cash, but as I mentioned, that wasn't the case here. We've had, we've had those differences built up over the years and, and then last year we had to finally say, hey, we've got a problem in our cash, we gotta get it to zero. So that's my comment on the cash, you know, they're not done, done right, but, but they're acceptable. But let's monitor them and make sure those differences don't continue to build to the point where it's not acceptable. Any questions on that comment? That's a lot of information.
Say we write it, say we write it off like a flicker and then we monitor it and whatever the next year it's off $700, then we will know where that was coming from.
You should know. In fact, we should know where these differences came from. We could remember last year, we did expensive amount of work on the cash to get it to zero or I think about a hundred dollars. So sometime in the 12-month period, we went to $8,700 in one account, $5,000 in another account, $13,000 in another account. That's all attributable to activities that happened in our fiscal year.
12 months?
Within 12 months.
This was all for 12 months?
Yes.
Are we gonna find out where this is all from?
We don't know. I mean, that, that's the question. We either, we say, it's not material, I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna just adjust my cash down to, to the number that we write this off to. And then we look, next month, make sure we stay at zero. Make sure the next month, make sure we stay at zero. The problem we have is we don't write it off and next month we have enough, then, then it goes, goes to $10 million, then the next month it goes to $14 million.
What did we write off last year? We, we went down to zero.
Last year, I think we accounted for everything. I think we got down to a hundred dollar difference.
This is $27, $28,000.
Yeah, this, and individually these accounts.
Right.
Yeah. Last year, I think, I think our biggest difference last year may have been like a thousand dollars after we did our work, after we, we went through all.
That's understandable.
Yeah.
Almost $30,000.
Yeah. So that, that's my concern, is that this is gonna continue to build if we're not, one, adjusting it to, to zero, you know, draw a line in sand and say, we're gonna adjust it to zero right now, it's not big, but what's our difference next month? Is, is it gonna go to another $5 million or, I'm sorry, $5,000? Well, then, then we have, we have 30 days of activity to look at, to figure out where that difference came from, rather than trying to look at 365 days of activity. And so.
Saying the, the cost would be more to try to find this than it will be on the budget basis?
Right, exactly.
So these are, these are three separate accounts?
These are three separate accounts.
And they're cash accounts or?
They're, they're bank, bank accounts, yes.
Bank accounts. Does that mean a certain month or a certain category?
I'm sorry, maybe that's.
Is it, is it a certain category or is it bank accountability, is it bank statements?
These are, these are bank statements, they were, I'm running here, which accounts they were. The accounts payable. The operating account, the payroll account, the account payable.
Say again, the three?
The operating bank account, your general operating, your payroll account, and your account payable.
How many other counties are off close to $30,000? That, I mean, you want for the amount of revenue that we're generating or?
Percentage wise, that's pretty long to be honest. Thousands of dollars, not, not really, I mean, we're usually off a thousand, two thousand, and, and the difference will climb, decline, but, uh.
But not $30,000?
Not $30,000. And actually, this is not, one, one is going one way, I think the $5,000 is going in opposite direction of the other two.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see, yeah.
It's, it's a net of.
Like $60,000.
Yeah, exactly.
I think you're, you speak the. That was gonna be my question, I'll be cross your mind if it doesn't stay in here.
The $5,000 is a negative, right?
The $5,000 is a, is a negative, going in opposite direction of the staple.
I bring it up to about $16,000, if it's not, $28,000.
It's kind of difficult to, to look at them as, as aggregate because they're, they're related to different kinds of transactions. So I still look at them comparatively rather than in an aggregate.
But it all comes out of the same account?
No, they're, they're all different bank accounts.
It's still generated from the same revenue in the county?
No, they're, they're from different sources. That's why we have different bank accounts for forty years.
I understand, but it's all county money?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's the whole, I'm trying to, so it's still taxpayer money?
Yes.
All accounts are paid off to taxpayers.
Any other comments or questions on that? The first comment there. The second comment is, is something we do transactional testing on, on cash receipts and so we tested some of the tax collections. And we noticed that, uh, one of the partnership entities that were collecting taxes from San Antonio River Authority, they had, they had approved a exemption rate on their properties of five percent. No, half a percent, I'm sorry, half a percent. And when we did our testing, our exemption, um, that we were applying to those, uh, those locations were at five percent. So a difference, we looked at all the exemptions for those properties, it came out to a difference of a thousand dollars. We did notify San Antonio River Authority with expectancy and they issued a, a no action letter to, to the county saying, don't worry about it, it's a thousand dollars, we're okay.
So in other words, to find this $16,000, if I call it another $15,000?
Absolutely, it's not worth, um, a lot of the effort to find that. Like that said, it continues to build, it's still doing, and then you're gonna have to work effort to find that. So gets to zero, you know, draw the line in the sand and try and isolate a period when the difference happens so that you can do further investigation that's gonna cost you less.
And if it happens in a thirty-day period, how much would that cost to come back and look for that?
Well, if you, if you outsourced it, uh, you know, a couple of thousand dollars, but what we're hoping is that internally you have the resource to do that.
What kind of court action is necessary to basically do what you're saying? To reconcile the accounts to zero or start over? Does the court have to, to approve the adjustment of the figures or what is the proper procedure to handle that?
Well, I mean, when the auditors in the past have completed their audit, they have always given us a list of journal entries to make, to make the numbers tied to what they have confirmed. And so if that is in part of the journal entries, that will be entered into the system, probably affected with May dates because we don't have them yet.
Because of the, the amount, we did not do a journal entry for these, so.
How can we monitor this going on into the future without having you come present?
I mean, getting bank recs must mean to see.
That is, would be a suggestive matter for the court to also receive copies of the bank reconciliation so that I could make sure that what the bank reconciliation shows is the reconciled balance matches what the system reports shows.
It is important that they train the eye, you don't have to be an accountant to be trained to do it, but you have to know what you're looking at. Case in point, if you, if you don't start with the right number of the bank balance, if you just put a number in there, which I know some of the, the reconciliation reports that come out of the system do not have the right bank balance token. Not to worry, somebody did a manual bank rec down below that, that had the right number, but the system itself is not kicking out current information. So I say that because you have to know what numbers those should be and where to tie the key numbers from the bank rec to make sure it's done right. Because I can get a piece of paper and it'll show a zero balance, but if I don't know that these numbers are correct, I can't rely on, on a zero balance bank rec.
And on another note, this fiscal audit that they just completed was in our old accounting system, April term, and the manner that bank reconciliations are done now in the system, by has to actually put in the balances from the bank statements into the bank reconciliation.
But now we've got a whole year of this month that's overdue.
Okay, you're, you're now into, uh, New Year's.
Yeah, we're six months into our New Year's, yes, not a whole year.
March of these. Well, this is some audit that's long. Well, if, okay, if, if we're doing a bank statement and if the treasurer has one balance and then you have to, you do the balance as well?
Michelle has also written down the bank statements manually, not through the system, we don't have access.
Okay. Has she ever had any zeros that she comes up with?
There are accountable differences because of outstanding transactions that may not actually appear on the bank statement but are, the action is in our system, so they are, she may not reconcile to a zero balance because there's several items that she has questions on, but they are reconcilable.
And then you do what, like?
I do, I do the bank reconciliation, yes. And I take, and I put the new system, because we're still working on it with the 292, the big account, it's like the $8,000 difference, I manually have to do that. In fact, La Juana and Michelle and Sylvia and Elaine and I all sat down trying to work on stuff yesterday with it because it just wasn't diving, but it's different than the old system with the new system, like La Juana said, I have to go in and manually put in what the bank statement says and then it compares to the general ledger, then we have to go in and do like outstanding deposits or things like that, yes.
Okay, so we, I might be lost, I don't know, but if we, you have a balance number we need to start with, correct? That's gonna be the recommendation of if we don't, if we can't get these three done, these three to zero, I don't know what we're gonna do with zero, then whatever, beginning number to start with, for the fiscal year. And then, so the last bank statement, we should be able to find out how far we're behind there, plus or minus it?
If I can, it's not uncommon for bank recs to not do balance, okay? It's not uncommon for them to have some type of unwarranted difference. What typically happens though is usually in subsequent periods, that reconciliation item falls out because it's something we forgot to pick up at some point. It's a difference between something that cleared the bank that we didn't pick up or something that cleared our account but hadn't cleared the bank yet. And, and we may have missed it as a reconciliation item that went out. So they typically clear out going forward. Or the number that we're off usually stays that number we're off indefinitely going forward. My concern is, okay, we got this, let's make sure they're not, they're not continuing to grow, which again, I bring up history here, we had this ass, we had this continual growth of record differences.
So what Mike's trying to say is that the reconciliation for January 2015 showed $8,700 off, then February's better show the same $8,700 off. That needs to remain consistent. It may not actually zero, but that difference needs to be maintained. That month's activities needs to zero, but that accumulated difference.
And then at some point you say, okay, I've got this continual difference that I've had to, I've gotta eventually write, if you wanna write that.
Why would you write it off instead of going back and locating where it started? Do it the right way.
Because there's a cost benefit to that, there, there, if I know it hasn't cleared out, if I know it's, it's still showing at the reconciliation.
So if I'm getting my own money, I just throw it away and don't worry about this?
Everyone has their own material level, you know, my, my personal checking account, I've got a material level of fifty cents, you know, I'm gonna look for everything, so I guess, there, again, because of the cost benefit, at some point I just gotta say, okay, this, this is what I know I can spend going forward, I just gotta get the, get the right to show that.
And if you actually, if those adjustments are ever made, any write offs are ever made, then in my opinion, the bank rec needs to zero and match every month from here forward.
Yeah, and that's our concern, if we do write this off now, we support, insert zero, well, next month we'll have another material difference, and so we write that off, then the next month we have another material difference and we write that off. At some point, all these write offs become a pretty big number and, and that's a concern, we've got to figure out why, why we can't truly reconcile these, these accounts.
Look, what you, so December 30th, December 30th, 2014, we had $38,831,624 off, that was our, that was the best, what the total dollars, corn standing there, you did have to get all accounts, yes.
So you see, you see, well, you got $38,000 to a difference of $16,000.
Which number did you say?
$1 million.
Yeah.
He's gonna say million.
Thirty-eight million, what?
Eight hundred and thirty-one.
Okay, those are not, that's not our total cash, that's our total assets.
Total government fund.
Right, but that's total assets, your total cash is only cash in hand, the thirty-eight too. Those others are prepaid expenses due from other funds, accounts receivable, they aren't actually cash that we had on hand as of September 30th.
But all the funds, October's, uh, thirty, maybe, until, until, until page six of the balance sheet.
Yes.
Judge Long expressed some concern and I, I agree with him about the, uh, just writing something off, but if we had to go back and look for this and understand your cost benefit or understand what you're trying to present to us, but what would you estimate the cost to find these, this $16,000 or $18,000?
If we were, I mean, to find this $5,000 difference in one account would be the same type of activity we did to find how much we were out of, two hundred and some thousand? It's the same amount of work that has to go in because we go in month to month to month to looking at all the transactions we go through to find out which ones we need to pick up. And I, I believe a mass thirty, sub-thousand.
It was right at $50,000, it was that we had to hire someone externally to do it. When there's a difference in an account, that should be reconciled internally and found. We shouldn't have to find, hire somebody externally to do it.
But if we were to do it, like I said, regardless of the, the amount that we're searching for, it's the same amount of effort as someone who's been seeing that.
Well, this is very well, but, and then what was, what was the $15,000, I thought you had mentioned it was gonna be a $16,000 difference, did we cross $15,000 to find that difference?
Yeah, it might be, yeah. I just suggest, if Mike called that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what did you comment about that, that $15,000?
I don't, I don't, if I did, I didn't mean to, but, because last year we did the same amount of work.
The only reason is I think the comment was kind of like, yeah, I don't know if you're not a jail, that's what I got, I was gonna do this, $15,000. So you're talking about it'll be around $50,000 to find this?
It would, yeah, because it's gonna be, and last year we were only looking in one bank account.
But you're looking at, you're looking at, what do you count?
Three accounts right now.
Some of the accounts we normally look to is $50,000.
Last year, the, the $50,000 was one account, the operating account that we had the significant difficulty.
But when they do an audit, they confirm the balances in all accounts, not just one or two.
Right, I understand, that's, and that was the $50,000.
That's it, the operating account that we did last year for fifty, that, that has you most, I mean, a lot of transactions. The payroll and the, uh, the account, the account, they will have a lot of transactions The payroll and the account, the account, they will have a lot of transactions.
Shelby pointed out something you'll have to page four. Excuse me, and I'm not good at reading this stuff, this is above my head when it comes to accounting, but we show a $38 million plus, and that shows cash and cash equivalents, and then you show total assets of 56, 583, 300. But a minute ago, unless I misunderstood, on page six, the bottom issue was $38 million plus, and that was supposed to be the total asset.
Okay, yeah, I will. Okay, so there are two financial presentations within a government accounting report. On page six, and I highlight page six because this is what we call a fund level presentation. It's how the county keeps their records in house, it's how you do your budget, it's how you manage the county's financial situations. This is on what we call modified accrual basis. Bear with me, I may get too deep in accounting terms, but hopefully it gets you to where we need to be. So modified accrual means, like taxes, taxes for instance. Taxes on a modified accrual are recorded on a cash, cash collection basis. So we record revenue for our taxes when someone comes in and pays them. Now, if you took accounting or have any accounting knowledge, there, in the for-profit arena, we record things on an accrual basis. So for taxes, for instance, we assess taxes October for the year. In a for-profit environment, we were recording receivable for all those taxes and we record the revenue, regardless of whether we collect them or not, because that's when we have them available on accrual basis. So, the presentation on page four is on a full accrual basis. So, and not only is it on a full accrual basis, it's on a fully consolidated basis. So all your funds are presented in this one column, on a full accrual basis. So your taxes receivable, all the revenues recognized for that. Your bond debt at the fund level, you don't record bond debt as a liability. You record the liability on the full accrual basis. And your capital assets, so when you purchase capital assets at the fund level, it's just an expenditure that you go and build the building, but not on the full accrual basis. We capitalize those as assets on the full accrual. So the big difference for your assets would be a lot of your capital assets are recorded in that total assets number of 56,000.
So on accrual basis, that includes taxes not collected, that's what the two you referenced?
No, that would be the full accrual. It would have all your taxes and your capital assets as assets.
In other words, on page six, what is reflected is our cash expenditures and cash receivables, not receivables, our cash revenues that we've actually received. It's just reflecting cash in and out, and as of September 30th, what expenses we'd already prepaid, like some property insurances, things like that. On page four, that reflects all our assets, our cash, our assets, less depreciation, any receivables that we have out there, should it be property taxes uncollected, whatever, court costs uncollected, whatever. That includes all numbers on page four, all possible revenues and expenditures that we would have.
Page seven may shed some light on how we get to reconcile these key schedules. Page seven starts with our fund balance from our fund level statement. So the 36, 389, 509, if you turn to page six, you'll see that on the far right column, second number to the bottom. We had to add in $17.7 million for capital assets. There are other long-term assets that I think that's, that's our taxes receivable, $145,000. Oh, sorry. That is our warrants receivable. So warrants, again, those are recorded at the modified accrual when someone pays them. Both recorded receivable for the warrants out there, and that's $145,000. Then the $317 is our taxes receivable. And then we subtract out our long-term debt to get us to the 44, 278. Now if you turn to page four, the 44, 278 is our net position on the, on the forward-looking.
Back to page seven, when you mentioned the long-term liabilities, that includes employees' sick leave, vacation leave, holiday leave, comp time, everything that's on the books that is not payable in the current term, but it's there and could possibly be.
Any outstanding obligations.
Again, I stress that at the fund level reporting, that's what's very important to management, to your commission, because that's how you manage the city finances. The full accrual was a product of standards we had to follow, which was an attempt to get non-government people to understand the financial provision of that long-term. So how can we compare these five presented financials of the government? How do they stack up? The primary reason for this are bonds, because they can quickly assess the general health of the organization. But again, you don't manage from this presentation.
We look pretty healthy, question?
Oh, yeah. You look healthy, very healthy.
We won't ban the emergency room.
Yes.
But if we're not careful, we might be.
That's the concern. Since this is an action item, let me see if I can paraphrase this a little bit. If we accept the report as given, and I'm not questioning it, I don't have that much accounting background, especially when you get into this federal entry system. You're suggesting that we monitor this going forward to make sure that these balances don't grow, that they remain constant in terms of their equity or amount, if you want to term it that. And if they get out of sync, then we really need somebody to come back and help us find it?
Yes, if you're not able to do it anyhow, yes. Because what will happen if you don't take care of it, is what happened last year. When we come in to do the audit, we find out we can't issue an opinion because we have something material to state.
And then at some point, and give me a suggestion on a point that lets, for the benefit of consideration, say that these differences remain constant, that we quote "found the problem," if you want to call it that. How long do we wait before we go write them off, if you want to term it that, or? If Judge Long suggests we go after them and pay them money to find what the difference is, how long do we tread water until we do something like that?
I mean, again, these are 930 numbers, 930 differences. So you've got six months of activity that you should be looking at to see where you're at now. And then the question is, where are we now? Are we the same number, or are we not? My hope is that you're the same number. My historical analysis doesn't even prove it, no. Six months, nine months, I was going to call it previous, but I think.
We need to do something, yeah.
No, no, wait till we come back to do the audit, you know.
Yeah, question.
Why is there some metrics?
Burgen, yes, we're within that $8,000, yes. And what part of Sylvia's job is going to be, is to put a second set of eyes on those bank statements. I'll be doing and she'll be doing. Also, so if there's something that I missed, then she'll correct it also. And with the accounts payable one, the $13,000 different one, there was some money that we had moved into the wrong account, and we moved it back to the wrong account again, so we needed to move it one more time to make it correct, and that was going to bring it down a couple of thousand on that one, too. So, yes.
So you're telling us we're headed in the right direction?
Yes.
So, did you, did you agree with what you said? You're not missing anything, right?
Yeah, I'm not going to add a comment on that.
Well, you looked at everything.
Well, I looked at everything at 930.
Yeah, but he had questioned the accounts payable one, there was a difference on there. And we went back from October 1 of 2013 to September 30 of 2014, Sylvia and I did, and through the accounts payable only, and found where that money was moved the wrong way, and then we corrected it, we still moved it wrong from one account to the clearing accounts. So once those are done, that's going to change that $8,000 difference on the operating fund because some of that money will be put back into that one. Because your accounts, your accounts payable is a clearing account, and your payroll account is a clearing account. So we write checks off the accounts payable or the payroll, and then the other funds reimburse that account. So if the money from the other funds were not done correctly, it's going to reduce those, all those funds.
It sounds logical, I mean.
Once they're put back in correctly, it changes the balances.
What you're saying is there are transfers between funds that were not accounted for.
Correct.
Possibly accounted for these differences.
Correct.
Okay, these numbers, there are some differences, can we see the differences? I don't know who works through them.
I do, I do.
But can we see like the difference of the $8,713?
There in my office, I do an Excel spreadsheet on the operating account every month that shows you what the general ledger balance is on each road bridge, all that come out of that 292 account, and what the general ledger balance is and what the difference is, deposits that weren't in the bank at the end of the month. We get geo funds, our state comptroller funds are not receipted in, and I take those off that general ledger balance.
How do we know if, I'm just saying, if these aren't going up, would that be like over the next meeting? Could we find out?
Yes, I could have those for you, yes.
That's not too short?
No, no, because I do them every month.
Okay.
I do them every month.
Now, what is your threshold, is it zero or 50 cents or a dollar, $8,000?
Zero would be perfect, but.
But what do you use?
Well, it would be perfect, but from, since I've gotten here almost eight years ago, we have not had a zero balance on any, or on any of that 292 or the payroll or the accounts payable. There has not been a zero balance on that one, on those three.
I think she's correct, I don't think we've ever seen the recs zeroed out. But they have stayed prior to last year, putting an acceptable difference.
And that had remained consistent from month to month, there was not a fluctuating difference.
And then it no longer consistent?
I haven't seen any reconciliations for this fiscal year, I'm able to tell you that. I know on Michelle's reconciliation.
What are you calling this fiscal year?
October 1 of 2014 to now. Well, September 30th, yes. Now I know when Michelle hand reconciles without using the computer system, when she does it the way we, as in normal Joe Blow's, do our personal account, there are several things that she has identified either not as being receipted in or things that are in the bank statement that she has questions on that may make that balance fluctuate somewhat, the reconciled difference. But then once those questions are answered, that are able to be answered, then that goes back to the same unreconciled difference from the previous month.
So you're saying, to interpret this, that if everything's done that way, there's consistency?
Correct.
Just, I'm assuming that y'all do other counties' business like this?
We do, we do other counties and municipalities.
Compare us to someone else, or we better, worse, same as?
This year, you're comparable. If I was only looking at this year.
I understand, yeah.
But, but there are histories, there are histories that we have to consider, which is, I tell you what, I mean, I've had this comment with one of the local governments. And it's not a big issue, because they haven't had the blowups like you did last year, where it eventually amounted to an enormous difference. And their differences are consistent. You know, last year's difference in their cash records is roughly the same as this year's. Again, the consistency from year to year. There's no consistency here, which is why we sent some time talking about it.
And these three items were the only thing that you found is the problem with these?
Yes, yes, and I can't remember how many, you have a number of questions.
Well, I understand, I mean, but that's what I'm saying, in other words, these are the problem children.
These are the problems, and these are the problems because of the amount of information that flows through them. The other ones that work without any issues, obviously, maybe more, you do the products for a lot, something minimal.
I can't speak for everyone, but I suspect that Commissioners' Court would like to see whatever the difference is in ours presently, and then see them every month going forward to make sure, is that something that's doable?
Yes, 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 sir, yes.
For I think that that would be very important, that we have an opportunity to monitor, excuse me, that these things aren't growing, shrinking would be good in some instances, growing as we go forward.
We've been receiving reports from the treasurer every month, and this has developed. I'm not sure how we can tell, you know, I know we can tell if it's different, but whether, whether the problem is solved or not, I'm not sure.
I don't know either, other than if these are the problem areas that we somehow or the other highlight or designate or in some way identify them in the Treasurer's Court today, I hate to say so, I've said this before, for me, this is like drinking from a fire hose. There's so much information that it's very difficult to absorb, but I'll give them the amount of time here.
We've got to have another year of auditing that's un-audited at this point, and it's past time that it's done, I think.
It won't be, until this fiscal year is finished, then they will audit it, which this fiscal year will end September 30th, 2015. So hopefully sometime in November, December, we can start the audit on our current activity.
How many years has your firm audited, Conor's?
What other entities? What other entities, and I'm not questioning your capability, please understand that, what other entities, counties or governmental entities do you operate upon?
We have Conal County, Hayes County. And then, a number of municipalities out there, I'm not.
Another way for court to monitor this on a monthly basis, as far as, even though per statute, that's not a requirement of the Treasurer's Report, but it's. that's not a requirement of the treasurer's report, but if you would request the treasurer attach her bank reconciliations with her report that you can see consistently each month of those amounts.
I think that's what I was trying to ask for, I didn't know how to ask for it, in other words, that's what we need to see, is that, as the gentleman says, that we're remaining consistent, maybe we're gaining ground, but at least we're making consistent.
And we are available to insurance at any time. Take that fire hose. Water's not yet, too open water.
We need some way, some assurance every month when we look at the figures that are furnished us that we're not getting any worse, to be sure. And hopefully that this problem is getting solved itself. I'm not sure whether that is a realistic expectation or not.
Well, if you're getting information from the treasurer's office, I would ask, I would be able to scrub through the county auditor's office to make sure if it's accurate or not.
Well, auditor and I have not sat down and looked at bank reconciliations together.
I'm sorry, say again?
The auditor and I have not sat down and looked at my bank reconciliation to money. So it would be hard for her to verify yes or no until she, until we do that.
Well, we're the county auditor, not that.
Not that, I'm sorry.
I understand who she's referring to, but why would they not sit down and reconcile? As part of what's going on?
Well, it's not a responsibility to the county auditor's department to reconcile. We can review them, but in my opinion, we don't need to sit down and go item by item by item by item. If that's the case, then that would be two of us doing the same job, and that's we're done.
Well, apparently we need to. From what I'm hearing, we're not accurate. Is that true, that we're not accurate?
I have not seen any reconciliations from the treasurer's office, I just see the ones that Michelle handles.
But you examine everything to see if it's accurate, do you not?
I examine the books.
The books, as you can?
Correct.
Which is what I'm referring to is everything, I'm not sure what else there is.
Well, again, I can see what's put in as receipts and what's expended from every fund. But as far as bank reconciliations, the official bank reconciliations from the treasurer's department, I do not see.
Is it not a responsibility of yours if it appears that there's a discrepancy in it to look further to see what the discrepancy is?
As my department does the hand bank reconciliations, as Michelle does those, she gives a list of issues that she's identified or cannot identify to the treasurer to answer, to respond back, to correct the entries for whatever.
Okay, Michelle works for you or her?
Me.
Okay, and you see that every month?
Those are not current, Michelle is in November, I believe, right now, or December. Because of all these other things that have been going on, she's not current on them. But yes, I have access to Michelle's side.
Yeah.
And in the past, up until last year, Michelle's hand bank reconciliations had always been what the outside auditors had used for their checks.
What they changed for?
Because it's a statutory duty of the treasurer to do the bank reconciliations. So that should be the ones they are looking at to use as their basis.
Why did they look at something different, do you have any idea?
Well, historically in the past, when the problems started way back when with previous administration in the treasurer's office and the missing funds were identified, and I'm going back to the term of Sandra Garza, at that point in time, Michelle discovered the reductions in cash that should have been there. And so she has consistently continued to do that process since then, even though it's not a requirement of our department. And so, from way back then, the outside auditors at that time could not make heads or tails of the reconciliations and so they utilized Michelle's to be able to complete audits.
But I give them my reconciliation also. They have my copies also from the September thirtieth.
Did y'all have what Michelle...
We were like so long, five minutes.
For this, I'm sorry.
Would it be unreasonable for commissioners' courts to ask the treasurer to give us a report on these three accounts every month compared to see what they're doing?
Would that show something that was helpful to us?
I think so, yeah.
And I don't have a problem with that at all. I am glad to show you my reconciliation sheets. It's an Excel spreadsheet, yes, but I don't have a problem doing that at all. I'll include those, yes.
Just please highlight it so we know what we're looking at.
And like Mr. Galvano said, those three accounts are the, have the most activity because that's where we pay all the bills out of. The payroll's not as much, now we've gone direct to the deposit. I think we have maybe twenty-five or twenty-six out of two-hundred checks out for payroll, that's not as much. The operating account, the two-nine-two that we call it, has gotten a little smaller because in October, we moved the credit cards to a different account. So that helps a lot because you're not having to go through all the credit cards. But those three that he's talking about are the three heaviest. It's a, we pay a bill and we deposit the money for it. It's an in and out. There's not even, there's only one page to the account itself and some months don't even have any activity. The ones he's referring to have the biggest balances.
It would seem to me, and I'm not an accountant, will never be, that since those have the, those three accounts have the most activity, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
That they ought to be the easiest people. I'm sorry, when I worked with figures...
Well, your clearing accounts, your accounts payable and your payroll account, those clearing accounts, those should be relatively simple because it's paying out five-hundred thousand dollars, you're receiving in five-hundred thousand. They should clear, they should zero every month. Based on the numbers that they're identifying in their letter of conduct, that amount should never change if that's a carryover from several years. That should remain consistent. But a clearing account ideally zeros.
I don't think we have any issues with, or at least I don't with the auditors. So basically, we're being asked to accept their report, if I understand that correctly. Have a pretty good handle on what they're telling us. And so, you know, I'm of the opinion we should accept their report as given and then perhaps we need to put an agenda up or maybe we don't. Include it in this to make sure that we have a way of monitoring this going forward. Now, I don't know, but that's probably not the main issue here because we're just basically accepting and approving their report here. So that's probably the separate action I'm doing.
So is that your motion to go ahead and accept it?
My motion would be to go ahead and accept it as presented.
I'll say it.
To have the report filed at the county.
Just add that.
I didn't read particularly the duty this way, but we have an opportunity, which I assume we're still paying for, to get the information that's available through the accounts of the auditors. And it seems to me it's an opportunity to see what's going on and for us to understand. And I'm not sure where we're going to be when we don't have the auditors' questions.
Tell us what you want to do, I'll draw a motion, that's all.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that's good enough.
I was gonna say, I think we need to do more.
We're going to approve soon the, yeah, the report.
I was gonna say, this gentleman has done his work and I find no fault with it personally. And that's basically what we're doing. Now, the next step is, what else do we want to do along with this? And perhaps we're not able to do it today because it's not listed on the agenda. But we need to consider what other action we need to take. Vias agreed to provide us with these figures for these accounts. That certainly stepped in the right direction. Anything else he suggests, I'm amenable to.
I'm not sure we're going to have him here to tell us.
I am going to pass on business cards so that he asks you, give us a couple of contact information.
We have a motion, y'all have, y'all moved and signed it to approve the audit account. And is there any more discussion from any of the board? If not, all in favor of approving the audit, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same side? Audit's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. I'm not sure, but we'll pitch you before we leave the grounds or whatever. Better run from the front door.
And have we paid Steve, that will bring you back.
I do have another appointment to do.
Thank you all very, thank y'all very much for being here and spending the time with us. We'll be back with another video later.
Okay.
The prayer on item eight, in the agenda discussed, approved, disapproved, continuing the Humana insurance for employees benefits and then for instance, health life and LDD, whatever LDD is. I'm going to let the insurance man tell it. I'm sure he will. Attorney by the law, I believe, Jess, that's, you want to get up here?
Yes, sir.
Talk to us about it?
Yes, sir.
Come in.
Okay, first to begin with, for the budget purposes, we always have to budget in the expenses for the employee benefit, which currently includes health, life, and long-term disability. Historically, the court has always gone out for proposals, which insurance companies will not give us binding figures until sixty days before renewal. Our renewal date is October first, so sixty days. We have gotten at the very end of July, but normally it's early toward August that we get those numbers. And so, if we go out for proposals, we have to meet our advertising deadlines, et cetera, and then the time period before we can open an award. The later we do it, the more likely we are to have any type of numbers back from a multiple of providers because of the fact they like, as in-depth a claims history as we can provide for them. This first item is to discuss if we want to just stay with Humana as we are now and we have been for several years. And then the next item is if we don't want to just stay with them to authorize going out for RFPs. But Jess does have some information that he'd like to provide to the court to support going out for the RFPs.
Thank you, Juan. One judge, one commissioner?
I agree with the judge, I'm not really good at accounting. I'm going to address both, just eight and nine, I'm going to pass this out there. This is a pretty material here. A little bit about, I've been serving the county since 2011 and I wanted to give y'all some figures. That is, the rate is four oh seven forty-five and currently we're paying four ninety-one per employee. I wanted to do kind of a national average, which is five hundred and fourteen dollars. That's twenty-two dollars and forty-seven cents lower than the national average, four point four percent. That's not a complete comparison of identical claims, that's just a cross fall, national point of service claims. But the rate change since 2011 has been twenty percent and the national average has been twenty-six percent. Part of some of those increases are of course, of course affected by claims and also by the impact of healthcare reform. There's a POCO fee, two dollars, a reinsurance fee of five dollars and twenty-five cents for covered life. Then a health insurance provider fee of two point seven five percent, so that's factored in the rates. Want to talk a little bit about Humana, they've been a good partner with us. Me, internally, I want to address number nine, but first I do want to stay on Humana a little bit about what I'm excited about and what we've been trying to accomplish here at the county is a wellness program. It's called Vitality. And Humana is probably, well, they do have, in my opinion, the most robust wellness program in the industry. And it's very challenging for us to get engagement and I'm glad I have an opportunity to visit with y'all because I'd like for you guys to help me with endorsing and engagement. We have the potential of ten percent per employee if we can get a member to Silver Status. Silver Status, it starts with a health assessment and a biometrics. And currently, I kind of put some numbers on here. We have nineteen employees that have taken the health assessment and that is a crucial step. So, in private industry, we'll have employers say, look, you have to do this, you know? And of course, we, y'all want to, y'all want to bring employees, we need to maybe get creative on how we can get them to take that health assessment. Because it's a good thing, you know, a healthier employer is a happier employer and we can get ten percent off. So, this engagement, and we've been trying to come up with ideas of how to do that. Perhaps incentive, give some incentives to the employees that want them. Vias talked about maybe offering a day off because if you go through the whole year, ten percent is five hundred and eighty-nine dollars annually. We only have two members right now that are at Silver Status. But if we made a goal to have twenty people, just twenty members, we'd get the eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars savings annually. So if we take that engagement, we're going to have a healthier, happier employee. Not only if we could incentivize a day off, but you get rewards from Humana internally that are nice gift cards, that are work things, purchase movie tickets. If you're really involved and get to Gold Status, you can get a, if you build your points up large enough, you can get a flash screen TV. I mean, there's some very good incentives in the fact you're creating a culture of a healthier employee and we all want to be healthier and happier. And what we have done in my agency that I'm proud of, that has really made a difference is we have a family nurse practitioner who works with us. She works for me and she comes out free of charge and she helps with consulting after the biometrics are done. She's part of our team and she's going to continue to monitor the progress, help with campaigns. I would suggest, you know, other companies, we've done Biggest Loser, Lost Weight Campaign. We've also done the steps. We may want to talk with maybe some money provided by the county to purchase pedometers. When I say a pedometer, that's a measuring device that calculates the steps everyone takes. Because with this measuring device, it feeds into the Humana system that gets points for them to get to Silver Status. It's one of the measurements they can to get to Silver. And we're all about trying to help y'all accomplish those goals. And it's a really robust plan with Humana that we're, and we're, on May the fifth, we're doing the biometric screens and we're hoping to have some good participation.
I have only nine more spots left open.
I want to, I want to say Vias made Silver, she's one of the two people that are at Silver, so she's a big advocate. And we would like to just see if we could get some engagement from the commissioners to help us help your employees get healthier, save money, and that is with Humana. And so I just wanted to spend a little time on that. And then I wanted to address number nine regarding October. Each and every year, I go out internally to all companies. I put pictures of them there to kind of show you. Humana, of course, through your way, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, Aetna, United Healthcare... Humana, of course, through your way, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, Aetna, United Healthcare , Cigna. And what I do is I leverage each company against each other to maintain a recommendation and a rate. So I don't know y'all's opinion, but I work for you guys. I don't work for Humana. I'm always going to come to you with the best possible rate. I think the wellness part of Humana is something we're doing extra and above most of my competitors. And we're really engaging in that process. So taking a step towards wellness is just going to be taking a step to achieving a better premium. So I just wanted to address number eight and number nine and answer any questions y'all may have.
How, what, what kind of relationship do you have with Texas Association of Counties under that place?
Well, you know, I'll, I'll ask.
How they like this?
I am, I'll say this, I have a lot of business with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, but Florence County is the only county I insure, and I'll make another point, it's the only county I want to insure. I have relationships in this county. I was born here, raised. I enjoy the people, and you know, I'm not into political, I mean, I enjoy this, it's what I do, but I'm, the Blue Cross Blue Shield's fine relationship with the county and be able to, we secured it good last year. We helped use that leverage with Humana to come down. So it's, it's part of our process each and every year. My point, I would say this too about the Texas Association of Counties. I think that sometimes you'll find that county will go to them, they're, they're a pooled situation, and that can be a benefit for sure. But sometimes the pooling, what I've noticed in, I've worked with school districts, they'll get into that pool because that's their only, that's their only resource. You agree?
Right option.
Yes, so I'm thinking if we can have healthy claims, stand our own, we can all, you know, it's, it's a year-to-year evaluation. I'm not trying to be. Good question.
I'll, I'll comment that in last year's vote, I believe every company that gave a vote had Humana as their great principal. That's their one. Yes, they're all in favor of Humana. As far as looking to see numbers here, if Humana had gone up as much as the average has, you would assume that they would be going up larger amount this year, or is there any indication from them?
Do not have a clear, clear number right now. I do thank them, unfortunately, but we probably are looking at an increase. Well, I'm really trying to increase the level of engagement with the Vitality program because that will help me negotiate, and if we got healthier people and Humana understands that. So I will say that a company this size, I insure here, TR Lees, they're with Humana, and they have a genuine renewal, it's 5.6 percent. Their loss ratio isn't the best in the world, but it's kind of give you a guide of, boy, expect that rate to come in. I will say this though, we have kept the benefit level very high and haven't changed any of our thought, our design. And that's a, of course, an opportunity to, if we change the design, we can look at lowering premiums. We increase our deductible or change our co-pay.
I'm going to say what, what is a co-pay? I realize there may be a sliding scale, but are we on a, is a county on a fairly level, excuse me, fairly low co-pay or higher?
On average, we have a bit lower co-pay, and that we adjusted that last year, remember? It went down.
And we also have a $1,000 deductible on our plan right now, but we also have a health reimbursement account where if an employee meets that, any, we used to have a 500 deductible. So anything over that, the health reimbursement account will reimburse that employee. So you have to meet your $500 deductible, but if you spend $750, then that health reimbursement account is going to reimburse you $250. So the net out-of-pocket deductible for an employee is 500. So we've got a real good plan.
Y'all, y'all be, y'all have to intend. So we could, you know, make some considerations to adjust that, but you know, it's tough to take that from an employee when y'all have such a great company.
I will say that two years ago, we had, I personally had several employees complain about the insurance. This year, I haven't, the past year, I haven't had any employee complain about it. I think they've got to be good service.
I certainly appreciate buying at home and Jess's willingness to work with the court. From the standpoint of fiduciary responsibility though, I think that we should request proposals rather than cut our options short. I think that should be something that should be done, hoping that he will continue to serve us because I've been here a short time, and I didn't take health insurance because I have others, but I certainly want the county employees to have that reasonable health plan.
And in that instance, Jess is supportive too of going out for proposals because then it opens the door for him to be able to contact all his potential providers and to, as you motioned, David, make sure Humana stays true to us.
Will you contact them either way? Yeah, I think the, I think the, you know, healthy competition is always good. And like, I'm going to go out to bid on y'all's behalf every year and reconcile, look at all the numbers, negotiate, and come up with a recommendation. When you open it up for public bid, you're going to have that, of course, you're going to have other agents involved. Some would argue that that's a healthy thing. For me, I'm going to do that for you.
But if we, if the court takes the option to not definitely stay with Humana, then technically you can't go out on our behalf with other companies. They have to offer it to open it up to the population.
True.
So the court's decision either is we're staying with Humana, period, and if they come back with a 50 percent increase, uh-oh, we're in trouble because we have no option. Or the court can do as we've done in previous years and open it up for RFPs from any insurance company, any insurance broker, anybody out there that wants to pursue.
The percentage that we've been going up, it's not too, too high. And if we would stay with Humana, it would be with Williams Business Service, right?
That's true.
Okay, and you would go back out there and keep it within the range that we, they keep it in on the court?
I would, I would, I believe that we're looking fairly, fairly good, I feel, very nominal increase, but I, I'm still going to do the work to go out to market, I'm sure of that. So it's always, I've got to keep Humana on, on right increase.
Let's say we would, we would go with Humana, let's say we could go to their business service, and then Humana would come up with 50, 50 percent increase, which we know that won't happen, like, you know, just something like that. Can we go to other ones? Can you go to other ones and try to get us?
Absolutely.
Okay, you could go offer bids even though we agreed to stay with Humana? Do you want to say?
Y'all agreed to stay with Humana. You have to stay with Humana. If y'all agreed to.
You approved number eight.
That's why number eight, we shouldn't take no action on number eight, and then go to number nine and.
And then, then anybody that wants to offer a proposal can.
Yeah, and Jess has leverage.
You don't want to.
Jess has leverage because he's been with us, but he also offers other opportunities to the county as our representative. For instance, he hired the family nurse practitioner to assess everybody and to consult with everybody. Not every insurance provider out there is going to do that. That's an added perk we give to the judge.
Well, my, my opinion on this is, yeah, I see what y'all mean about Humana. Okay, right here on number eight, discuss approved, continuing with Humana, doesn't have anything about Williams Business Services. Number nine, discuss approved, disapproved, request a proposal for employee benefits. Okay. My opinion would be, we've been with Williams a long time, we've had good service with them, stay with Williams and let him go out, and you go to all these companies, and you give us the best, the best project you always have been.
That's what I would like to do.
How long have you been with them? Three, four years?
Since 2011.
2011. And Pete said that there was a couple of, you know, just satisfied customers, but employees, I'm sorry. But last year, you didn't get any calls. I didn't get any calls. Something about Shelby, you didn't get any calls.
You know, the thing that, when I submit my book, you'll see every response from the carriers listed below, and what, if, what their rates are, what their plan designs are, and then if there's one that's over 100 and you better, I'm going to recommend that to the court.
Whether it's Humana or whether it's ABC.
And every year, it's been with Humana, because they've been the most competitive. I do feel, again, as we talked on the first page about their commitment to wellness, I think they're having the most, what they bought, they went over to Africa and bought this company, bought it, tested themselves on their own employees, took it out nationwide, and have really done a good job with wellness. And they have found statistically, every dollar that you spend towards wellness, you send, you get a $5 return. So we're trying to do that, and I think it's a great thing. Vias, if, if we can get some type of endorsement from y'all to maybe provide pedometers, I think that would be a good start of each county employee to have a pedometer. If we could tell each employee, hey, if you make it to Silver, we're going to give you a day off. If you make it to Gold, we'll give you two days off. We could get some encouragement going. We're going to talk about healthy eating, we're going to talk about exercise. Ginger, that's a great forte that works with me. She's awesome, she's caring, loving, good lady, and she, she wants to get involved with this county. But if y'all make those steps to say, hey, get a little budget going, get a little game plan, and I'll try to help quarterback that, and, and like I said, I want to earn my keep now, and this is the way to do it, is through wellness.
The one I hope you're reconciling.
I think number eight should be no action and that we should authorize requesting proposals for insurances. I don't think legally that the court can say, Jess, you do it for us. I think we have to open it for anybody out there that wants to. And they come in, and they may come in with the exact same plan that Jess offers, but Jess also gives us the added personalization, hiring the family nurse practitioner, trying to work with us, you know, billing questions. They've been really good working with the treasurer's office on billing issues and premiums, and they just kind of personalize it to us, and I think that has to do with Jess being a hometown wolf.
You know, the court does not have to approve, if I understand right, the lowest bid they can take all the consideration, you know, and, you know, service, personal service, et cetera, et cetera into it. But I, I do believe it would be responsible to pass number nine and advertise and see what happens.
Motion.
So I may.
I second. Any other discussion? You saw number nine, correct?
Oh, yeah.
I saw number eight with no action.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. You made our voice there.
Any other discussion from the court?
All in favor of the motion signed by by raising your right hand. All opposed, same side.
I think we should just stay with Williams, because we're going to probably end up with Williams, because he always does the best for us.
Could I ask a question of the court? Maybe I can bring you on as another agenda item for future court to talk about maybe a budget amount for wellness, some, some of these ideas that I have.
Do they have a suggestion of which whiskey Vias is receptive to?
Has less hops than their general juice.
And I would, I would bring Ginger with me. She's, she's been really a knowledgeable part of my team.
I have one other comment. Juan, I don't remember, but I know we had the discussions these four, I don't know which court I was sitting with, which court I was sitting with. We had that, and it was about Jess keeping him and not going out for bids, and if I recall wrong, we mentioned that the county can keep, not, just not Williams, it says anybody else, and we wouldn't have to go out for bids after a certain time that they had been with us.
Choose an agent.
Yeah.
Choose an agent to do it.
That, that's it, yeah.
I'm not sure that there has to be a period of time.
I'm not, that's why, so I don't know if you could remember, a minute or two ago. But I know I was sitting here with the court, that we discussed that and that we could, it wouldn't be illegal to choose an agent for us. We would be doing that if I break it, but I don't know, we could look into that just for the next time.
Because that's a professional service.
Exactly. We don't have to go out for bids. I mean, we just go out for bids for the benefit of the county to see if we can get them rolling. We don't have to not choose Williams. It's not, you know, the court doesn't have to go out for bids if we don't want.
Not for the agent.
Not for the agent, right? We can choose Williams Business Service, and then he goes out for us. It does, I did want to correct that before.
We've looked at your motion.
I don't, I don't, I just sometimes like to make an exception. Sorry, Jess.
Do you want to have a different motion?
No, I voted against it already.
Okay. I'm just wasn't sure what we were doing. I had that all.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Jess.
Out of CNN, we've discussed, approved, disapproved, contracted with Alonzo, somebody earned in the court, CPA, fiscal year 2015, independent audit.
Again, this is similar to the same situation. It's a professional service, so we are not required to go out for proposals on it. We can just continue contracting with our current independent auditors. This will be for the fiscal year that we're in now that will end September 30th. The sooner we sign up with whomever's going to do the outside audit, is the sooner we get on their calendar to perform the audit, which means we get the audit the court sooner. We are required due to our bonds to meet certain SEC requirements. That means the audit has to be in a 99% complete draft form and submitted to SEC by, by March 31st of the year following the close of our fiscal year.
You've seen the performance of the audit team that we hired in the past year.
Yes, sir.
And we've had them three years, is that what I'm saying?
Jeremy indicated this was our fourth year. Yes.
Have you been satisfied with their performance year in the period of time?
I have been. I think they do a very thorough job.
And is the court, do you think you have the contact limit or have any?
I will make a comment, Jess. I thought he gave a very good report today, very explanatory and, and, and answer. They, when they did the audit last year, I didn't feel like you guys had explanation through the time that they came in and discussed how much money it took. But I wasn't satisfied, and maybe I just didn't understand. But I wasn't satisfied with the explanation. They gave us through the time that they had continued auditing the client with the year. That's my comment. That time wasn't satisfied. As far as this report today, I was very concerned.
My question is, are there, the next agenda item adds a request for proposals for independent audits, but is it, is it customary, like, you use them for like five years, and you try to find somebody else to get a different set of eyes on everything, or what's?
That's at the discretion of the court. There is no statutes in the local government code mandating changing independent auditors at any point in time.
Is there that many that?
In fact, there are not that many that conduct county audits or governmental audits. And in fact, the independent audit annually is an option of the commissioners' court. Based on our population, we are not required by local government code to have an independent audit. It just helps keep things true.
I would believe in the state of flux that the situation is in presently, that some continuity would be good, at least for another year. Shelby mentioned, I think every once in a while it needs to change just to have somebody else's take on the same thing. But again, right now, we're trying to reconcile, the county is trying to reconcile problems and hopefully getting closer to having these things done, and perhaps. Perhaps it would not be the best year to change horses. In this one instance, I might personally favor continuing with them. But then, after this year, or this coming year, whatever we're discussing right now, the next audit. Uh, I think perhaps then it might be time to, to change and have someone else look at it through a different perspective. But right now, personally, I believe that it would be an unwise move to, to upset the continuity that we currently have.
I will say, I am in my 15th year here as the county auditor, and this is only the second firm that we have had. And when we did go out for proposals the last time, we only had two proposals.
The buyer...
Their expires unpleasant and then ABIP, who was not ABIP at that time, but they have since.
How long have we approved contracting with Alonso? Buckle East, Ervin Palmer, CPA for the fiscal year 2015, as the independent auditor.
I second it.
Any further discussion, any discussion by the court? If not, we'll vote all in favor of the motion to hire the firm of Alonso, Buckle East, Ervin Palmer. Signified by raising the right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Four to one, is that right?
You voted yes.
Okay. We're on six, eleven, eleven, twelve now. Discuss, approve, resolve, conduct protective public official workshop training, G200. Protective government code, chapter 418, section 418, point 005. Emergency management training, Tony Gross, DDC 18. Is available to conduct training on March 26th, beginning at 9:00 AM. Officials who should attend the training include the commissioners, that means all five of us, and you got a judge, um, commissioner. County attorney, county sheriff, emergency management coordinator, county auditor, county treasurer, and that's offered by Susanna Kaliba. Susanna, you wanna talk about this a little?
Yes, the handout that I gave you gives a course description. It's a three-hour course designed to introduce county judges and commissioners, mayors and council members or other elected or appointed officials to emergency management. Some of you may already have this training from years past. If you do, I request that, uh, just submit your, they're gonna get a training, uh, and then you don't have to do the training. But it would be a good idea if you wanted to do, or refresh your, if you wanted to do that. The second...
How long is the training, three?
It's a three-hour course. Uh, this, uh, Tony Gross said that you could complete the training in two and a half hours.
And he's available...
He's available on the 26th. May 26th, beginning at 9:00 AM.
I believe that's right.
And the other thing is, there are other remedies. If you cannot attend, we could figure something out with, uh, with Tony Gross for that. And then the second part of the handout that I gave you is actually just the, uh, the portion of the government code that stipulates the training has to be completed in a hundred minutes.
Got Tony Gross, he could come to us and we can go into him, or how?
He will come here, and we got the training here in the firm.
Part of the government code here says, this section applies only to an elected law enforcement officer, county judge, or an appointed public officer of the state of, of a political subdivision, and saving of elected officials.
Well, it's, the training is for elected officials. It's for any official that would be involved in disaster management for the county. And that would include commissioners, because they are responsive to their jurisdiction.
On what date, you say it was, the 26th?
May 26th.
You're saying you're gonna be gone that day? 9:00 AM.
I've taken that course before, and basically it just tells you, it just explains more about what happens in a disaster and what your responsibilities, our responsibilities are and how we, uh, utilize the state services and procedures, how to get to them. And it's gonna be open to all the elected officials of the county?
If it's open for our county, for our county officials.
But the city...
We can open it to those officials, it has not been open to those officials at this time. But we can certainly open it to them.
I think all elected officials, in my opinion, should be, the city, is, we're going to offer this in the county. I mean, I think that I'd be invited to cities to take part of it too. Put on the, yes, I would, if you go, come in.
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and, uh, we, uh, go ahead and conduct the Texas Public, Public Official Workshop Training, G200. The government code, chapter 418, section 418, digital five, emergency manager training. And it's open to all elected officials within Karnes County.
And appointed?
And appointed.
A second.
Any discussion, court? If not, we'll vote all in favor of the motion, signed by already in your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Four, four, and one again.
This is at no cost to the county, Susan?
It's no cost.
Yes, ma'am, no cost to the county.
Okay. That's everything on that. Are you gonna stick to item 13?
Well, I have...
Oh, we took 12 now? Already had 12 done. Okay, item 12, discuss, prove, resolve, have workshop to discuss risk management needs, responsibility and duties. Larry Macaschio, risk control, safety consultant with TAC. Is available to meet at 3:00 PM on May 5th, that's offered by Susanna.
And basically, Mr. Macaschio, uh, he's coming on May 5th to control our building site inspections for safety. And then he is available, he at 3 o'clock on the 5th to iron out what vision we have, or to help us develop a vision for risk management.
What has this got to do with emergency management?
It has to do with risk management.
That's not your department.
Well, you may or may not manage it personally.
Who did that? We didn't...
On the 5th, I'm not gonna be available, I'm gonna be at a doctor's appointment in San Antonio, the 4th and the 5th. That's Monday Tuesday, right? The 5th is Tuesday? Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'll be in San Antonio.
Was there any way to have it another day if we wanted to try it or not, sir?
We could try for another day, I can schedule it with, uh, Mr. Macaschio. Since he's here on the 5th, already in the county doing the inspections, that's why we scheduled it for 3:00 AM.
I can fly, my MRI appointment is on 10:30 in the morning, I don't know how long it's gonna take, it either take 45 minutes, an hour, I may be back, may be able to be back on the 5th. But I will, what is the case? Jess said if he wants to move it, we can move it or not?
I don't care when we get it, I, I will be available anyway, but I just wanna make sure. If we're, if we're going to have it, that we get as many as we can.
Yes, sir. I can do my best, thank you, and it's possible.
That is stand by. Huh?
I'm, I'm happy to come to a risk management workshop. My concern is, is what I see is another bike being built, which will add, should have been a half-time job, that's become a full-time job. And for more long, we're gonna be a secretary, yada, yada, yada. I am totally opposed to that happening. We don't need, first of all, a full-time, uh, risk, emergency management, manager and accountant. But that'll have to come at a budget time. As far as the risk management or risk control, I think that's a great deal, I'm happy to come. I'm not real happy with what I see happening in this particular area.
Just to clarify that a little bit, David, several weeks ago, the court took action to reassign the risk management duties from the treasurer's department to Susanna, or to the emergency management coordinator.
Yes, if I have any...
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. I was gonna think of my foolish.
Any other comment from anybody on the court? Is there... Can you, uh, can you make comment about Macaschio, told you about Karnes County?
Well, Karnes County does, Karnes County does not have a risk management program in place at the corporate level. Uh, each, each respective department manages their own risk. But at the top levels, there is not something in place. Mr. Macaschio is willing to assist the county in developing that type of document for the county. To put internal controls into place that protect the county in the event that something happens to one of its employees, or one of the people that come to visit one of its facilities, or otherwise.
With Mr. Macaschio's assistance, he is an employee of Texas Association of Counties, of which we are a member, of which we pay annual membership dues. So, it's not technically a free service, but it's a service at a much reduced cost than if we hired an individual to come in and do this. And this has to do with making the work environment safer, so no one trips and falls. And we have broken hips, which leads to workers' complaints, which leads to employees being out, which leads to reduced work, excellent.
Any other questions, court, comment?
After I put my, I put my mouth one time off, so try and...
You might like the taste of it.
The shoe leather...
I know, won't you?
The shoe leather does not attract this taste. But I, I do believe this particular thing is something that we should do. So, I would move that we resolve to have the workshop as, at a time that's convenient and capable, in a, that we can get together.
Okay, it's such a time, 3:00 PM, May 5th?
Yeah.
Those they can attend can... Get a DM, but those they can't, I guess, won't.
Yes, and I have talked to numerous employees in the county about, uh, uh, being a part of a, a safety committee that will also assist in developing the risk management program, or the risk management accident prevention.
Any other comments, court? All in...
Do we have a second?
Uh, we have a second. We made the motion, me, and Shelby second. Any other comments? Question, Ethan here? All in favor of the motion, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, all voting for it. Thank you, Susan. For item 13, hopefully. Discuss, approve, disprove, TSI Laboratories, Construction Materials Testing Proposal for the Karnes County Courthouse. Roof Restoration Project, give me amount of $1,091 budgeted for this item. Is $5,000, I don't know where the budget item is, I did not locate it, but we'll look. Offered by, I'll raise your...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please, along with this item, should have been emailed the, the chart, and this is the same chart that, um, Luana said, that I work with, the auditor's office, in tracking the project budget, and with the light on that, for $5,000 for construction materials testing. So, that was developed, you know, more than a year ago, we were putting together the budget for the county. And it is now time to engage a, um, testing firm to do that testing on the project, since the project has started construction. The only testing that we have on this project will be the masonry, the C and U masonry and the grout, that will fill that, um, and the mortar. So, the proposed, uh, cost for that is $1,091. It's a not-to-exceed, it will be built as the services are completed. And there's an attached chart on, um, unit pricing that will be billed to the county. And this is based on the, um, construction material and test of Labatory's best estimate on what it will take. If he has to do something additional, then we'll have to come back to the court with that request. But we don't anticipate anything else. If he fails any test, if the contractor fails any test, they have to pay for the retesting. So, the county only pays for the initial testing. And they contract directly with TSI Laboratories, as we have been doing on, on the other projects.
We have a, we have a handout in our material, each of the commissioners does. If you wanna look at, uh, uh, Navy and Sphere Architects, the agenda items for this meeting. And it's got several pages, and I think the one that generally covers that would be page... Three, four, what? Well, but I want everybody to look at what we're, I'm gonna sign. Well, to that particular part of it, you gotta look through the whole deal to look at it all and understand it. And I, I don't mind signing if the court authorizes me to, but, uh, I want you all to look at it. If you've got any questions, we need to talk about it now, I'll leave.
If I may, the first page is the, um, the letter of agreement. And that essentially talks about what TSI, that TSI Laboratories is a full-service geotechnical, uh, construction materials testing laboratory. They did do the testing on the courthouse, um, west side restoration, as well as the foundation repairs. And, uh, and now their, this proposal is for the roof that we're working on now. The second page is the estimated cost of quantities, because everything is billed on a time and material basis. And these are the, um, agreed-upon charges for those unit costs. And then the third...
Wait just a second, there's, we've got a, you're talking page numbers, and the first page that we've got front of us is a cover page. So, don't get confused like I do. And then the letter from, uh, Gary Katsamia, and then the estimated cost and quantities. Those are marked pages one and two, and they're actually two and three in...
Yes, sir, okay.
In your presentation. And all of the pages are, are numbered later than shown, except them, there's, there's three sets of copies in there that, uh... I'll take care of when I sign.
Yes, sir.
But go ahead.
Okay, so, as I corrected, the first, first page is our request for the agenda item. So, the next, the second page is the letter from TSI Laboratories, which is the agreement that will actually be signed. It is in the same format, I've said the previous agreements that were signed. The third page would be the estimate, the quantities, and these are not to exceed. So, when they submit their invoice to us, we go back to these quantities, we make sure that the trip charge doesn't exceed what they've agreed to. We make sure that any of the unit costs matches exactly what they proposed to the county. And then we track to make sure that we're within the not-to-exceed price before any invoice is sent to the auditor requesting payment. And then the third page turns to the terms and conditions that establish, they, they want 24 hours of notice before scheduling, et cetera. So, these terms and conditions, a copy will be provided to the general contractor to make sure he complies with the terms and conditions. Because he's the one that will be coordinating... sure he complies with the terms and conditions, because he's the one that will be coordinating when and calling for the test when they need to test.
And these are, there's three copies of this agreement, and they're all for my signature if I'm authorized by the court to sign for the county.
Yes, sir.
Questions from the court? Comment?
This, what I've received from the presentation is coming in substantially under budget?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Any other question? Okay, is there any...
Can allow the judge to...
All right. To, is there any other comments? Are there any other comments or questions concerning this matter? If not, we'll vote for the authorization to approve the motion. There was a motion made by Shelby.
No.
You say it. All right. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying West Rose, all right here. All opposed, same sign, all voting for. Motion, clear. Judge Long, she got your name right this time. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Discuss the act on the county treasurer's report. Do we have copies of the treasurer's report?
Well, the test that I'm getting from the commissioner's board is before you'll approve it, that you want to see my reconciliation sheets before you do that. So I will present those to you on the next meeting, if that's what you will want. And I'm thinking that's what everybody's wanting to do. I started giving everybody a second set of copies. Okay. So I will do that. And we are still having issues with March. My first issue was the CDs were not showing up on end-of-day process, which I know that kind of freaked me, but basically didn't post it to the general ledger like it's supposed to. Got that corrected. Then when we received the C terms money in, it did the same thing, and tech support corrected that. Yesterday, Luanne, Michelle, Sylvia, Elaine and I all sat down at Elaine's desk, working on some other issues that we have as a group, to put all our brains together and solve some issues on that. Then about 4:45 yesterday afternoon, I was still about $1.6 million off in March, and found out that the payroll, March 27th wasn't posted to the general ledger, that there was a million-dollar money that I had brought in on outside investments, that when I ran the report, told me it wasn't posted on end-of-day process. We could see it on the report, so we're not sure what that issue is. So we are, I am still working on color technology. I actually had my conference last week and talked to Kirk Cunningham, who was the cell representative, that came and did the presentation, so we weren't happy. Told him that the Sheriff's Department pulled out of theirs with color technology because of the issues that we had. Give us product that was not what we thought it was going to be, and so he kind of got earful from me on that.
Has anything happened as a result of his earful?
No, because they weren't paying their money, so maybe it was a problem that's solved. I said a solution has been offered, which yesterday we found out. When they did the update, the solution kind of got fixed itself amazingly, but it's not what we wanted. But now we think it's now doing what, hitting the cash like it was supposed, we told it was going to. And when we looked at the March report yesterday, Luanne and I and the other ladies in the office realized it was doing what we had originally wanted it to do.
Luanne, you have any comment?
That is correct. We were reviewing March statements, trying to help find what the discrepancies were. And the fix that they had told us six weeks ago was that we, the treasurer would have to manually make some entries after every pay cycle, after every payroll, to get it to hit the cash line items. It was hitting the expenditure line items and sitting in a payable line item, because it's never coming out of the payable and coming out of the cash. So once she was entering those journal entries, that was hitting. We discovered yesterday, looking at March, that it did it automatically without her having to enter journal entries. So we're thinking their tech side has actually fixed the program for us. But I haven't had a chance to email them today to find out if that was just a fluke or how that happened or what's going on. But there is some other issue, because on receipts, our unprocessed, unclosed transactions show that it hasn't happened, but on our side of the books, it shows it has. So we're going to have to research that further to find out about that million dollars. And ironically, it isn't even a million dollars that we're talking about as far as that one transaction. It's out of our cash, that part's correct. It's just still hanging on the bank reconciliation side, like it hasn't come out of cash.
And that happened on several occasions where it tells me it's not on end-of-day process. But again, Michelle, when she put in the new bank account for the Sheriff's Department, when I received that money in, it was fine. These are things that we've had before in the past that didn't convert over with the new system. And that's been a lot of the issue, and stuff hasn't converted over until we use it for the first time. And so then there's a process that takes a long, longer than it should. But another thing with the entries that I was making, I need to now question them, was I'm supposed to be doing those now? Because if I wasn't, then I need to back those out, because then we're really going to be off, because it got taken out twice.
Well, have you called them to ask them?
That was at 5:00 o'clock yesterday, and this morning, I showed Luanne some other stuff, and her and I have been working on this together, showed her some other things, reports, and her and I are both going to be emailing them as soon as we get out of here.
Will y'all let me know when you get some response?
Yes, sir, we will.
And I'll let the court know.
Right, thank you.
Okay, go through your thing, this is power technology problem.
The problem that she's discussing now is far as receiving and payables hitting the, yes, it's internal in the software.
All right. Can y'all give me a man's name and phone number?
Yes.
There's multiples that we email every time we email, and yes, we can give you that number.
Thank you.
You might pass that along to the Court General, they need several phone calls.
Make sure that every member of the court knows what response you're giving. Thank you.
Will do, yes, sir.
If you will turn to page number 11, it's the account summary. I will give you some highlights of payments that are made in this cycle. Under septic tank permits, there is a payment to be issued to TCEQ for $6,250. $4,770 is for the time period of August 2010 to March 2015. I believe those numbers were confirmed on TCEQ's audit. Also is $1,480 in that same $6,250 for February through April 2015's permits that were issued. If you go to page 13 of 14, about two-thirds of the way down, you will see the expenditure of $79,406.34 for load materials this bill cycle. That includes water, that includes physical material, be it caliche, be it limestone, whatever, culverts, et cetera. Then you'll see a payment under heavy equipment repairs of $15,622.78. That's for repairs to the 2009 cab roller. The total payment for this cycle is $385,448.22.
What I saw here, on what page it was, was quenching food, it's $19,000 for audit?
Yes, that's the final portion of this previous fiscal year's audit.
So what is the total cost of that?
The total cost is $41,570.
I noticed there were a couple of things in here, including on page one, GMP Land closing escrow account, and somewhere further over, a title opinion on, let's see, second page, Langley and Bannock. Can you enlighten us?
The Langley and Bannock title opinion is something that perm took to, that perm to review. It has to do with title on properties that are involved in oil and gas leases. And then the GMP Land payment, they had an escrow account with the county for permits, and they have decided they are not going to need to issue any more permits, so they asked for a refund of those dollars.
Okay, thank you. And I take it, let's see, we got Chief Deputy here, the, Bell County and Hayes County are housing our juveniles. I say Bell and Hayes are housing our juvenile vendors?
I don't think we have any in Hayes, do we?
Yes, we did.
Okay, now?
Juvenile, yes.
Okay, we have some in Victoria and Jordanville right now.
Those were March.
Okay, that may have been the past.
About third or fourth way down.
It depends on commissioner, which facilities are available at the time we need them?
I figured that, I just noticed that they were awfully far away. I'm not busting at you, I'm just...
But it is also based on the services that are offered at different centers.
That's right.
And some of these involve some type of substance abuses.
Counseling.
Yes.
Correct.
I noticed we have a, let's see, a Davian Spears for EMS redesign. I bet Shelby can tell us what that's about.
Yeah, we had a, I believe when we moved the building a little bit over, as well as stocking, that had to do with the, adding the JP office to it.
And jail facility, I think that's a monthly billing from Davian Spears. I think at this point, that's ultimately going to be recovered from the contractor. Is that right?
Well, on the city, Carnes County doesn't provide any services to the weight facility, do they?
No, sir. Those are all county funded, as was the actual construction of the facility.
But it's down next by the city.
So I understand, and I also understand, we are not receiving any of the, or very nominal amount of any tickets issued from that facility.
We will be building the city as soon as we get the jail. It's just about...
What's that?
You're not talking about the jail. You're talking about the weight station.
It's my intention that this, I would say that we won't have that fight.
Well, I'm not sure what one has to do with the other piece, but I don't think they have the right to take over the weight station that belongs to us and charge us, or not pay us for the income that, and that's what's going on.
There needs to be some type of lease agreement or something going on, because we've spent a lot of dollars to construct that.
I haven't found any agreement so far.
Well, it would have had to be within the last three months that it happened, and I know nothing has come along.
Well, I know I have signed one.
Well, that's out of the city limits.
There's not anymore, I don't believe.
They took 25 feet of the highway from the 21 to the south, make to the 28.
And that annexation has already been approved? I know they've been having public hearings.
That one's been approved.
Excuse me. I know that when they came out with the sewer lines to go to the installages and stuff, they passed paces and shirings, and they, I think they got like at least about 25 feet or something along that side of the road. Now, it's my understanding, I've been to one of those meetings, that the things that have been annexed, like Maucow is involved in that also on that side of the road, but where I'm at over that side, it's, Shelby, you were the question that told me something about the weight station, because I didn't, I hadn't heard anything about, I can't figure that out, because...
They took, they took the site from the 181, they took so much to the fence along the property line all the way out, just past the weight station. Didn't they take, didn't they take all of Supreme and Hotel, whatever that thing is over there?
Did they, they went across the road and took the weight station?
Yes.
I didn't ever...
We'll have a copy of that, too, we can choose.
So how, I mean, how is it that y'all, y'all weren't notified on that?
Will you contact the city and see if we get a copy? Or I'll go with you, or I'll go by myself. I'm going to pay the bills. Motion and a second to pay the bills, is there any discussion?
I'm happy to pay the bills, but can I ask one or two more questions quickly? We have a huge amount of expense from the West Coast, and you and I have discussed these things before about such as that. Are there any, I'm not saying that they're not the best or the cheapest service, but are there any alternatives to them?
There are alternatives to them. When these copy machines were acquired, they were acquired on the state's contract through the Bibleworth, so they had it been previously.
Okay, that was, that was one of the things I had, let me see that quickly. The only other thing I noticed was the JP office in Runyon looked like, and I mean, this is nitpicking, but it had a $240-something electric bill for a month, and I don't know if that was more than a month or not, but that's about one and a half times what my house uses in Runyon, and it's quite that large. And so I just kind of noticed it was a little, looked a little large to me. But the other thing is, and one of these days I'll stop and visit with you, I still believe that we need to beat on AT&amp;T a little bit and see if they can come up with something a little bit better, but we have a motion before the court, and I'll shut up.
Any other comments or questions or discussion? All right, we'll, we'll call for a vote, all in favor of the motion to what pay the bills, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, all voting for. Bill to pay. Motion to adjourn?
I did.
Anybody want a second?
I did.
There's been a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, give up, leave.
It usually takes about two or three days.
I know, I have...
Almost, but not quite. Got to get there.
Yes, I guess I did that one.
Hi. Have a good day, too.